Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Here.
Lisa Bamanthi. Gina Barrows.
Here.
Tion Brooks. Eric Brizadis. Thomas Burrows.
Here.
Iris Cabrera. Phil Capone Negro. Is that Phil?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes Jerry, yes.
Thank you. Frank Carbone.
Here.
Stephen Chesler.
Yeah.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto. Giovanni Damato.
Here.
Eric, thank you Giovanni. Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibanowski.
Here, here.
Thank you Arthur. T Willis Alkins.
Here.
Thank you. Julia Amanda Foster. Chairperson Fuller.
Yeah.
Joe Goldstein. Joe. Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross. Katie Denny Horwitz.
Here.
Thank you. Sonia Iglesias.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moshe Indig. Ozana Kaminski. Ozana, I heard you before. I see her on screen, I'll mark her present. Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Lievitz. Yo Lo. Trina McKeva.
Here.
Sante Michele.
Yep.
Thank you. Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Needleman. Karen Nieves. Mario Dahmark. Janice Peterson. Dana Rackland. Bella Sable. Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Here.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Here.
Maria Viera. Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser.
I'm here Jerry. Eric Brizadis.
Jerry Lisa Bamanthi here.
Tion Brooks.
Iris Cabrera here.
Oh, one, one, wait, wait, one the time, one the time. So we had, we had Lisa Bamanthi?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I heard Eric, I heard Tion.
Yes, Tion's here.
I heard Eric. I miss anybody else?
Iris Cabrera.
Yeah, and Tish is here.
Tish is in the house. Anybody else?
Ozina Kaminski.
I have you both.
Okay, great.
Twenty-two members answered the call.
Thank you Jerry. Public session, public hearing is now open. First item on the agenda is liquor license. Do we have any speakers for the liquor license?
We have one Joanna.
Yes, we have Abrahim Abdul Malik.
Malik, are you here?
No, I do not see him here.
Okay, that concludes the public hearings session. Now we're going to our regular board meeting. Can we, can we have a moment of silence please? Thank you. Can I have a roll call please?
Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Here.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Here.
Gina Barrows.
Here.
Tion Brooks.
Here.
Eric Brizadis. Tom Burrows.
Yep.
Iris Cabrera.
Here.
Phil Capone Negro.
Here.
Frank Carbone.
Here.
Stephen Chesler.
Here.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto.
Here.
Giovanni Damato.
Yeah, yeah.
Erin, Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibanowski.
Yeah.
T Willis Alkins.
Here.
Julia Amanda Foster. Chairperson Fuller.
Yeah.
Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross. Katie Denny Horwitz.
Here.
Sonia Iglesias.
Here.
Moisha Indig. Ozana Kaminski.
Here.
Thank you. Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Lievitz. Yo Lo. Trina McKeva.
Here.
Sante Michele.
Here.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Needleman. Karen Nieves.
Here.
Thank you. Mario Dahmark. Janice Peterson. Dana Rackland. Bella Sable. Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Here.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Here.
Maria Viera. Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser.
Yeah, you hear me Jerry?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Bella, Bella's trying to sign on, she's in flood, she's out of town. I'm just sending, she's, I can give you her phone number, you should open up the line. I'll send your text.
Twenty-four members answering the call.
I'm here Jerry.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
You need one for a quorum.
Okay, well, we have Councilman Ressler on. Councilman, would you like to speak now?
Happy to say hello, it's good to see you Chair Fuller and all of my friends and neighbors and Community Board One. I really appreciate. Can't hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to share a couple of quick updates. It's been a busy, busy month. It's, can't believe we're just a month into the term, it already feels like we've been at it for dog years. We're having fun. I, I wanted to, we're, we're running all over the district, we're trying to meet with every school, every nonprofit, every senior center. So if, if we haven't come to pay you visit yet and you'd like me to come say hello, I'm eager to do it, just reach out and we'll, we'll get it on the calendar. There are a few key updates I wanted to share. One is relating to the just extraordinary spike that we've experienced in the Con Ed bills this month. Many people saw their bills double or triple, and it's really not okay. So just today, I organized a letter from the entire delegation of Brooklyn Council members as well as our Brooklyn Borough President to the Public Service Commission calling on them to investigate Con Ed, to try to do what we can to drive down these extraordinary increases. The doubling and tripling of bills is not okay, it's not sustainable, working people can't handle it, this was totally unexpected. I certainly feel blindsided, as I know that many consumers do, and we're going to try to bring some real oversight accountability there. As you all know well, we've got applications open for community boards, and so something that our office is organizing is a community board forum with, that will include a panel of experts talking about what it means to be on a community board. Karen Nieves, our former transportation chair is going to be one of our panelists, as well as the district manager from CB6, the secretary from CB2, and the chair from CB3, the other community boards in District 33, we're going to be holding that session on Zoom on February 23rd at 6:30 PM. Check our social media or our emails if you're interested in joining, but anyone who's interested in applying for the community board, we definitely encourage you to be there. Many of you probably saw over the last few weeks, there was a number of dogs that appeared to get leptospirosis at the McCarran Dog Run. We were able to work with parks, leptospirosis unfortunately is a virus that's transmitted via rat urine. The good news is, is that it's treatable, but it can cause fatalities in dogs and in humans. And so we lost reportedly up to four dogs in our community. We were able to get swift action from the Parks Department, for which I'm very appreciative, and they've been doing meaningful improvements that I think will address the conditions there, from rat mitigation to new trash cans, to replacing all of the wood chips and putting new gravel in for drainage. So we're hopeful there, it's, it's not a permanent solution, and we've got to put some real resources into improving the McCarran Dog Run. And then, this past weekend, we celebrated $75 million that's coming to Bushwick Inlet Park, this was one of Mayor de Blasio's last actions, Senator Schumer came out with Emily Gallagher and other local elected officials to celebrate that major investment. We still have some funding to go to get Bushwick Inlet Park fully built, this was one of the central promises of our waterfront rezoning, and I want you all to know that I'm going to do everything I possibly can to get every penny that we need to fund that park. And then lastly, I just wanted to comment on three violent antisemitic incidents that occurred this past weekend. Two were in our neighboring community board in CB3, just beyond our border, but one was in Williamsburg over on Rodney, and it included swastikas being spray painted onto the, to a school bus, one of our yeshiva buses, and we just have, I'm angry and I'm heartbroken, and I'm, I'm just deeply saddened for all of the neighbors in the Jewish community who are feeling unsafe walking down the street right now. And we've got to do so much more to keep our, to keep one another safe. We're pushing some new initiatives to try and deepen tolerance and cultural understanding in the South Williamsburg and Bed-Stuy communities. We've been in close coordination with the mayor's office, and are hopeful that we'll get some new resources to really try to put some new active, new initiatives into action to, to try and build deeper bonds and strengthen the cross-cultural understanding that we really need to root out these incidents. As always, I'm a phone call or text an email away if I can ever be helpful. Thank you Chair Fuller and Jerry for having me and all the members of CB1, look forward to working in close partnership with you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Maria just called me Vera, she's having trouble getting in.
I got in, thank you.
She's not in, thank you, I'm in.
Okay, is Nicholas Perry here from the Controller's Office?
Bella Sable, I just got on.
Okay Bella, so I guess Mr. Perry is not, I guess Mr. Perry is not here, so sounds like we might have a quorum now Jerry.
That's correct.
Okay, um.
Is the Councilman on board?
What?
Can I say a comment to the Councilman? This is Simon.
You got a comment for the Councilman?
Yes.
Okay.
Is he, is he still on the line?
Go ahead Simon.
Oh, I know, I just want, oh, thank you, Councilman, wish you luck in your hard, well-earned position. I, I, we, the Community Board, the Parks Department had put in a request, recommendations about class on playground. This has been a vacant piece of land, a long time, it's unutilized, and we were looking for some funding to fence around, do some upgrade on that location. So what would be the move to, to get some funding to look at this piece of playground, to make it useful for the local children and families in the area?
Thank you Simon for raising it. I do want you to know, we spent, I think, three or four hours last week, me and my whole staff, with the Brooklyn Borough Commissioner and his team, going through each and every parks issue in the district. I, I raised the Class and Triangle as, as an area where I think we need new investment, and they were receptive, so we'll, we'll be in touch with them to see what can be done, and I'll go over and visit the Class and Triangle myself in the days or weeks ahead, and we'll see what we can do. But it's definitely on our radar, once you know, we raised it with parks last week, and we'll do the best we can to try to see some improvement there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Ressler. Anybody else have any questions for the Councilman?
Okay. Not a question Chair, but I just want to say thank you Lincoln for your close attention on parks, and really appreciate it, you've been very clear that that's a priority as it is for all the community, so thank you.
Thank you Katie, you know, I, I think like many of us on this community board, many of the members of this community board, we're pissed that the promises that were made around park space and rezoning 17 years ago still haven't been realized, and I'm entering into office and couldn't be clearer that fixing those broken promises, seeing city agencies step up and provide the resources and do the work to follow through on Bushwick Inlet Park, on Box Street Park, these are critical priorities that we need to make happen, and appreciate your partnership, and we'll do everything I can to try to make that, to get these things right as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I have something I'd like to add, this is Del.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to let you know, Councilman, that we're going to be, I'm going to be sending you a letter, or perhaps it will come from the, from the board, but we'll be asking, inviting you to come to our March 1st Land Use Committee meeting to discuss with us basically the land use needs for the, for the district, the things that you would like to, how, and to discuss how we can work together to move forward with a cohesive plan, land use and landmarks plans for the district. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
I really appreciate it. Chair Teague, I really look forward to it, I will be there. I had the chance to, to speak briefly with Chair Fuller and Jerry last week, and made clear to them, and want to underscore to you and the whole Land Use Committee, that our goal is to engage every developer early in the process. If they're thinking about applying for a, a project in our district, we want to hear from them early, and long before they certify, sit with us, our office, with the Land Use Committee, and with the local stakeholders around a pros development site, so that we can give feedback and input and shape a project to meet our needs prior to certification when it's often too late. And if we can do that early engagement, I think we can get to better outcomes than what we've experienced, and I really hope to be a partner to you and to your members to make that happen.
Thank you, I'm sure you will, and I think that if we move in that way, then we won't have a situation like we have tonight where we've had to recommend a no with unless conditions are met, and probably only because we didn't get started earlier with the developer. I don't think there's any malfeasance on the part of the developer, so that'd be great, thanks.
Well said, thank you.
I want to add a little comment, thank you Councilmember Ressler. Tapping again on park, just to remember, there were also, we have transmitter park, WNYC Friends of Transmitter Park, a very important park, historically was the only one, and the first one, it still remains fundamental for a community, it's overdeveloped every month, we have a new tower coming up and bringing 2,000 people, lack of dog runs, but definitely something that was never put in place is the restroom, and, and I believe they are fundamental because there is a playground, there is family, and, and so hopefully that's something we consider, and then we have an historic building, which is a WNYC building there that is kind of dilapidated, I believe the Friends Group believe it should be preserved, and, but anyhow, in light of the restroom and the building, they forgot about transmitter park, and it was 1989 when the Community Board has pointed out that the land was up for sale, so let's just count how many years, and we still don't, we have a park luckily, but not restroom, so hopefully that could be also on your agenda to support the community, at least to get the restroom, you know.
I, I'd like to see a, a new restroom and transmitter, and I think we should have more public restrooms around our community. You know, it's, it's one of the things that boggles all of our minds, that it can cost $4 million to somehow install a restroom in a park, but until we fix the capital project process in the Parks Department, which frankly needs to be fixed yesterday, it's, it's a challenge, and, you know, I wish that I could say, we have all the money in the world at our discretion in our council office that we can fund every need, we're going to have to make tough choices and, and pick priorities, but there's no question, we need a bathroom in transmitter park, and hopefully we can get the cost down to make it a, an even more viable project, but it's definitely on our radar and appreciate you raising it.
On land use, and we know we're all there, something I care, I believe the community care a lot, together with affordable housing, it's a human right, for sure, I always voted in my personal history, always voted in favor, but I believe also, we need to recognize that the environmental measure, which must be mandatory, we have a, a global climate emergency, and we all know, that, hopefully they can travel together to, you know, with all the other issue, and we do not forget about that. So looking forward to, yeah, to work with you two on that too. Thanks, thanks again.
You're welcome.
This is Bella Sable, I wonder if I can comment something on something? This is about the, the development that is taking place now at the Certified Lumber Area Kent and Division, I, about the park that is going to be developed there for children and for everybody. I wonder, like they said before, we should look into it before it's too late, so we have a good park for the children and for the population surrounding it.
Thank you Miss Sable, I, I very much agree, you know, this was a project that was approved by Councilmember Levin over a decade ago now, and, you know, my first focus is that I, I'm concerned the developer that's finally moving, moving forward on the site, isn't actually holding to the terms that, that Steve had negotiated with regard to the affordable housing we were promised, so that's a big priority of mine. I will definitely look into the open space issues, you know, that site is, is currently undergoing development, the adjacent site at 500 is thinking about a rezoning, and the Brooklyn Navy Yard just underwent its master planning process, and there's supposed to be additional access to the waterfront there as well at each of those sites, so I'm very focused on how do we create a, a dynamic esplanade across the three locations, and ensure, you know, quality open space for the community of South Williamsburg along the water there, from Certified Lumber to 500 Kent through the Navy Yard.
Okay, thank you, I live, I live in, in that area, and I, I'm, I'm always thinking about it, something should be done before it's too late, so we can benefit from a good and comfortable and beautiful modern park.
Here, here.
For everybody to enjoy, so everybody can enjoy it, before it's too late, so now is the time that we need to focus and see that something sensible is being developed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, thank you Councilman, we look forward to working with you and helping you get everything we need and deserve for the district.
I'm here to partner, thank you so much Chair Fuller, have a great afternoon everybody, great evening everybody.
Likewise, stay health, stay safe.
Hi.
Okay, okay, we'll continue, can I have an approval of the agenda?
Phil Capone Negro?
I second.
Capone Negro and Vega?
I second.
Hi.
Hi.
Can I have approval of the minutes?
William Vega?
Iris Cabrera seconded.
William and Iris, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passed, okay. Public session, can you call it, Joanna, can you call the names for the public speakers please?
Yes, Captain Omar Birchwood. Captain Omar Birchwood, you unmuted?
You unmuted?
Oh, good, good, good evening, yes I am, how, how's everybody doing?
Hi, how are?
You hear me?
Hi, how are?
Hi, yeah, so this, like I said, my name's Omar Birchwood, I just wanted to introduce myself to the Community Board, I'm the command officer now for Police Service Area 3, which covers over there, and I know precinct cover like, you know, Williamsburg, Taylor White Houses, etc. I'm taking over for Inspector Esposito who's transferred on to the 700 precinct, so I just want to introduce myself, so you know, you know, who's running the PSA and that, if, if you, I mean, the issues, any house developments that the Community Board covers, that, you know, we have, I have open door policy, you could reach out to, you know, myself, I'll leave my information, all of my community affairs officers is on there, and will definitely assist you in anything you need. Just like, piggyback over the, the Councilman Ressler said about the incident crimes, like, we was involved in that in 79, we put, we put out officers where they needed to be, to increase police presence in conjunction with the 79 precinct, so that's what we're here for, if anything goes wrong in the community, we're here to, to all our support and help to, as, excuse me, this computer is messing up, to, you know, help you guys whatever you need. So as I said, if there's any questions, I'm, I'm here, if you have any questions now, I'm glad to take any questions anyone has.
Anyone have any questions? Seems like there's no question, thank you Captain.
Thank you Captain. Okay, thank you again, thank you everyone for your time.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Lauren Camito.
Hi, it looks like I'm unmuted. My name is Lauren Camito, I'm the branch manager at the Leonard Library on Devoe Street, and I was just stopping by to the meeting to let you all know that we've reopened, after several months of closure with a new entrance and a wheelchair accessible ramp. So we reopen regular hours, and we have a couple of new projects that we're doing. One is a Penn Pals project for all ages with the library, in partnership with a library in Brisbane, Australia, who we developed a relationship with during Zoom book groups in 2020. So you come in, fill out a form, we match you or your child with somebody who shares interests with them, and provide postcards and posted so that they can, you or they can write letters to a counterpart in Australia and get letters back. We also have continued our Friday 11 AM knitting program, which draws people from all over Brooklyn and New York City, but also oddly Tennessee, Arizona, and Philly. So if you knit, and you want to hang out with us on Fridays at 11, it's right on our calendar on the website, please join us there. We are reopened, masks and social distancing are still required per the library policies, and my favorite thing ever, I think in my career, is that we've gone fine free. So if you have late books that you couldn't return because we were closed, and you couldn't make it to one of the other libraries, or you're just sitting on them feeling ashamed that you haven't returned them because they're late, and now you're going to have a fine, just bring them back, no more late fees. We will still charge for books that are more than a month overdue, but then, once you bring them back, that, you know, replacement fee goes away, and we're just really excited to get everyone coming back in, bringing things back, and feeling better about using the library. And any questions anyone has about that or the reopening, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions about the library? No? Thank you for the updates, it sounds very interesting. Okay.
There's no more speakers.
Thank you Joanna. Committee reports. Steve Chesler, Environmental.
Thank you Madam Chair. I will have a couple items that will need to be voted on, I just wanted to know if it would be okay to combine them into one vote, I'll let you know what they are, but in the name of expediency, even though we're, it looks like we're having a shorter than usual night, but, so we've had a high volume of brownfield cleanup programs coming through for former industrial and commercial sites that are being redeveloped into mostly residential buildings, so, and there were four that were, we found to be significant, and so, we, to meet, you know, deadlines of Office of Environmental Remediation and Department of Environmental Conservation, ended up having two meetings in two weeks, so I'm going to just give you a summary of those two meetings, and first I just want to thank the Environmental Protection Committee members who came to both meetings, we had quorum for both of them, so I really appreciate your participation. I know, you know, many of you are on multiple committees, making multiple commitments, so. First off, we, we had a meeting on January 24th, and the first item was related to Site C of the Broadway Triangle Development, that's that's bordered by Bartlett Street, Throop Avenue and Jerry Street. And this is a program that is going through DEC. And so we, um, brought in, um, we ran Jane O'Connell, who's the Regional Remediation Engineer. And, um, um, and a project, the project manager. And also, um, Drew Vandenberg, who's project manager for Iceboro, who's part of, uh, part of Unified Neighborhood Partners, who are their developers. And then Environmental Consultant, Rue, was also in hand. And, um, you know, it's a, it's, you know, it's a, it's less than an acre site. And it was, you know, it was formerly, um, there was an undertaker, a tailor and a club and previous residential buildings that were demolished and there was an automotive repairs, um, business there. And, but the, the site was, you know, was, was, um, significantly contaminated with, um, volatile organic compounds, uh, a significant amount of lead. Um, and the, um, um, you know, kind of, you know, standard remediation proposal is to excavate and, um, you know, dispose of, of soil, replacing it, installing a cover system, a subs lab depressurization system, um, horizontal soil vapor extraction system, basically filters the, any vapors before they're released, um, on the roof. And instituting, um, engineering controls as well. Um, so our main, you know, our main concern, there's a nine-story residential building going up here. You know, it's just, you know, the controlling, you know, just with trucks coming and going, bringing, uh, moving soil. And, um, bring a new soil and just with, um, potential, you know, the vapors and dust emanating. Uh, Bartlett Playground is across the street and the Telmutic Study, um, uh, site is across the street as well. And so we just emphasized, emphasized that, um, that there'd be communication with Mary Salag of Parks and Recreation so they can, you know, act appropriately. Um, you know, one of the, uh, you know, volatile organic compounds is there is, uh, PCE, which is a, really a dry cleaning, um, chemical that's used. And it's kind of a mystery of where the origin of that is because there wasn't a dry cleaning facility previously on this site. So, uh, but just the same, they were, you know, they're, um, going, you know, just put in measures to prevent migration of the vapors and contaminated groundwater offsite. So, you know, the key takeaway was for the, um, uh, you know, this really strong communication from DEC and from the Unified Neighborhood Partners with nearby residents and stakeholders is, uh, and like Parks and Recreation. Um, so that was it for that item. And then we had an, um, you know, Office of Environmental Remediation Cleanup Program at, at River Ring at their northern parcel, uh, just a small section of it at 105 River Street. Um, Shaman Darashala was, he's the deputy director there. He was there with, uh, their legal counsel. And Two Trees had a, who was a developer, and it was wrapped by Bridget McCrum. Um, and you're gonna develop a 46-story tower there in the northeast section. That's where the cleaning will occur. There're gonna be two additional phases of cleaning of where the southern tower and then the open space and waterfront park area. Um, basically, you know, a quick summary is also volatile, volatile and semi-volatile organic compounds, metals, pesticides, um, that all exceeded, um, you know, levels that are acceptable. Um, and there's also anticipating that there'll be former, uh, storage tanks underground that they will have to, have to remove as well. They, um, again proposing, you know, that they are going to, um, gonna, you know, remove and replace soil, discharge wastewater in, into the sewer system. And there'll be a capping, uh, with a concrete slab. Um, and so it basically kind of a typical remediation there. Again, we're really worried about, uh, truck traffic. You know, will the trucks be, you know, be, uh, properly covered, what route they will be taking? Um, you know, really be mindful of that. Um, they're, as, they're estimating about six weeks, the duration of excavation. Um, we're just worried, just, you know, having giant piles of dirt blowing around. They assured us that they would, uh, not let that happen. Um, and then just one thing that, you know, Jerry brought up was necessarily related to the remediation per se, was part of this project in, in building the park, is there, there's an existing combined sewer, um, overflow outlet that's going, you know, right, basically, um, shutting it, you know, that's discharging right off the, the property. And one of the land use actions was being allowed to relocate that. So the question is where they're going to relocate that, you know, they're gonna move it further, further up north, where you have 184 Kent, another residential building up there. So that's something we, uh, you know, as a committee and a board, we, I think we'd like to discuss further and get the stakeholders in to just, um, you know, to examine where that might be, what the ramifications are of that. Now, a real, you know, another item that came out of both of these is that, you know, the, uh, you know, just a common sense action that we asked is that either DEC N or OER post safety and contact information on the construction fence of the construction site. But, um, Jane O'Connor informed us that DOB rules, uh, preclude anyone other than DOB posting, um, information there. Just, you know, um, straight construction information there. So we, um, there was a motion made to, um, to basically pass a resolution expressing our, uh, disconsolation, uh, you know, just taste over the law and to change it accordingly, uh, sent to the mayor and to the chair of the Environmental, uh, Committee at the City Council. But I want to hold that in, um, to include with another resolution that we will deal with, um, with our other meeting. And just at this point, does anyone have questions about either of these two projects? All right, I'll move right along to, um, the February 3rd meeting. And initially, um, we dealt with a, uh, OER, I'm, uh, cleanup pro, I'm sorry. Yeah, OER remediation program at Greenpoint Landing at their next site. This is, I think, site number seven at 16 Dupont, which is the corner of where West Street will be, uh, extended. And it's cross street from Greenpoint Playground. And we're, across street from that is Newtown Barge Park. Um, we had, uh, Zach Schreiber from OER there. Um, their, um, environmental consultants were there as well as, um, a, uh, Greenpoint Landing rep who is partnering with the Rockefeller Group on this development. Yes, that, that Rockefeller. Um, so the, yeah, the contamination is pretty extensive there, again with, uh, VOCs, SVOCs, metals, pesticides, um, affecting the groundwater, soil vapor. Um, and they're going to, you know, they're going to de-water, they're going to remove an extensive amount of soil between 17 and 29 feet deep. And so that translates into lots of truck, um, truckloads in and out of there. And so there are, you know, parents on the committee, parents from the community on the call who, uh, really pressed that you really gotta, you know, keep tabs on that. Um, and we're really worried about that, you know, just, um, the, the extent of dust. Laura Hoffman is on the committee. She's lived through the, the previous Greenpoint Landing construction, um, projects. And it's been kind of a nightmare for her, just having cars covered in dust and not getting good response from their community liaison, um, who was working there at the time. And we asked if, you know, unfortunately, um, Peter, who was their previous liaison, um, he passed away. And we're asking if there's someone else who is now assuming that role. They said there hadn't. And we, we really felt strongly that there should be a person, so they are, um, going to look into that. For now, they supplied us with an email. Um, and the other kind of elephant in the room is this is a J, this is very near the New Heart Superfund Site, where there's a phthalates plume and a TCE plume. Phthalates plume is right. So, you know, is, it's not clear how far into the street into Franklin it goes. But this deep Greenpoint Landing site is next to a vacant lot where a school was supposed to be erected as part of the, the promise with the special permits and tax amendments that were given to Greenpoint Landing for additional density and forgetting where the former, this current site is where the sludge tank used to be. So, um, to benefit them. So they didn't, they kind of went blank on that as far as what's being done there. So I feel like that's a, a discussion that really we're urging be picked up by the appropriate committees, um, education committee and or the land use committee to make sure that happens. They, you know, they're, until they're gonna have 11 sites. So it just seems, you know, just seems very feasible that they should be able to fold in the school into one of those because the parents will not let their kids go to the, um, the original designated site, um, because it's just too close to that plume. Um, and so, um, the, uh, um, so yeah, we basically, we ended up, uh, taking a vote, basically asking for additional air monitors to be installed into both Greenpoint Playground and to Newtown Barge Park. And that the cost be borne, not by community organizations, but the developer. And that, that passed unanimously. And then just the, the, the fourth and final project was, um, the DEC project, 1036 Manhattan Avenue, which is the corner of Freeman. And, you know, that's a worrisome spot because if you remember, there was issues, um, two years ago with vapor intrusion incidences with residents on Freeman Street, a little closer to McGinnis. But, um, it was really severe and significant. And so we really wanted to hear, uh, what is in the ground and in the water at 1036 Manhattan Avenue. And there is extensive, um, chlorinated vol- volatile organic compounds. Um, I mean, related to, uh, you know, dry cleaning. Um, and, you know, that, that was, that was the prime contaminant because there were quote unquote paints used on the site, uh, additional, additional retail. And they believe that is, that was the source of the, of the contamination. Um, this, what the proposed remediation is what they call an interim remedial measure, which essentially they do, they immediately start beginning some of the cleanup. And they're doing that because the developer wants to take advantage of 421A, which, um, expires in June. And unfortunately, the developers didn't, did not attend the meeting, which is, um, really, um, works against their, their credibility in this way, considering the proximity of the site and the state of the site. And so, um, the, um, we're, you know, we're just, uh, really want to watch, once they do the interim remediation, the, the developers have to do, um, another investigation to see if those chlorinated solvents are still exist and especially offsite. And, and just to, to know that the people on the call, both on the board and beyond, um, the, if, you know, detect, detecting the odor of these chemicals is what you used to smell in a typical dry cleaner is kind of that sweet, uh, kind of varnishy smell. So if you know folks or if you, you know, if you live there and you're catching, if you're, um, encountering those, you, you should get in touch with DEC or the board or our elected officials of Lincoln, as you're still on this call. Um, really, really to watch out on that because, um, it's really horrible what those residents are going through, anyone who else to go through it. And we're worried that they're rushing through this, so, um, um, so we took, oh, actually, there's three motions that, um, the DEC and the State Department of, of, um, of Health, let's reach out to residents in the vicinity of 1036 Manhattan about this remedial, interim remedial measure. Um, and provide agency contact information related to the remediation. Um, so again, communication is, is really, really key here. Um, before I ask for a vote, um, we, um, we want, again, as I mentioned, we, in old business, we want to explore the CSO relocation at River Ring. And, um, and then with new business, we're about to schedule a, another committee meeting regarding 83 Apolos Street cleanup. That is where there is a homeless shelter, uh, targeted to be developed there. That site is significantly contaminated. So in the first week of March, we'll be holding a meeting there. Um, and then just regarding the deadlines that OER and DEC impose, it really does not leave enough time for our committee and board meeting cycle. And, um, and both agencies basically stated, it's basically statutory that it's, you know, state law, related to the, to the deadlines. So again, we want to urge our elected officials and maybe we can follow up with them about getting that law loosened. So we may at least have 60 days. Um, just wondering if anyone has questions about these two other, um, cleanup sites at Greenpoint Landing and Manhattan Avenue? Okay. So I, uh, would like to, uh, make a three-part motion related to what the committee voted on. Uh, first related to, the first motion is to request, uh, New York City Department of Buildings allow agencies such as OER and DEC to post contact and safety information on construction sites. And then the, uh, second part is for Greenpoint Landing to install air monitors across from then their 16 Dupont Construction Site, at Greenpoint Playground and Newtown Barge Park. And then part three, related to 1036 Manhattan Avenue, that, um, Department of Environmental Conservation and the State Department of Health, uh, reach out extensively to residents in the vicinity of 1036 Manhattan Avenue regarding the remediation.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Jerry, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Who was the second?
I'm sorry, who's seconding it?
Was that Ms. Horowitz?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the motion is to, uh, adopt the three-part resolution as read by Mr. Chastler. Gina Argento? Bogdan Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Biamonte?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Tion Brooks?
Yes.
Eric Brizadis?
Yes.
Tom Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Phil Caponegro?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chastler?
Yes.
Michael Churchella? Teresa Cinciatto?
Yes.
Giovanni Damato?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Dibinowski? T. Willis Alkins?
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yes.
Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross? Katie Denny Horwitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Moisha Indig? Ozana Kaminski?
Yes.
Thank you. Ryan Coonan? Yoel Landau?
Yes, from Ryan.
Marie Lianza? Abraham Libovitz? Yoel Lo? Trina McKiva?
Yes.
Sante Michelli?
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz? Martin Needleman? Rabbi Niederman? Karen Neves?
Yes.
Mario Dommerk?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Dana Recklin? Bella Sable?
Yes.
Isaac Soffer? Robert Solano? Del Teague?
Yes.
Tommy Torres? William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Vieda?
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg? Simon Weiser? Twenty-eight men, members answering in the affirmative motion carriers.
Thank you, Jerry.
That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
That concludes your report.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. That's LA. Tom Burrows?
It was a fairly, uh, easy meeting this month. There were only 10 new applications and out of that 10, the, uh, committee considered, um, the applications and were recommending approval of five of them. One of them, the applicant requested a postponement. On two, we recommended denial. And there's two items that just, one was like, was, uh, shouldn't even been there because it was for an all-night permit on New Year's Eve, so it was a long time after New Year's Eve. And we keep getting these requests from, I don't know where, for expand, approval of expansion onto municipal property. And as I keep saying, we have no procedure for reviewing the shacks in the street. So I don't know why they're sending us to make an approval because we don't have any input. So what are we approving? So we don't take any action on that. Um, the renewals, there was, we, the committee recommends approval of all of the renewals. There were no- There were no issues with any of them that I heard from the nine oh or the nine four on any of them. And then there were five previously postponed items that were postponed to meet with the Greenpoint Coalition, some community groups. Four of those, we've recommended denials on and we recommended one approval. So everyone should have their report and I'd entertain a motion to approve the report as it's written.
I would like to make the motion to approve the committee recommendation, please.
Second.
Thank you, Bogdan. Joe, roll call vote, please.
The motion was made by Mr. Bakarowski and seconded by Capone Negro. Motion is to approve the committee's report as written. Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Biamonte.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tiaan Brooks.
Yes.
Eric Brizadis.
Yes.
Thomas Burrows.
Uh, yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro.
Yes.
Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yep.
Michael Chorcello. Teresa Cinciatto.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski. T. Willis Alkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Horwitz.
Abstain.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Ozana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Yo Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz. Yo Low. Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Macheli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Niederman. Karen Neves.
Yes.
Mary O'Domack.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Recklin. Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera. Maria Viera?
Yes.
Thank you. Now I did. Yes, thank you. Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser.
Jerry, I'm sorry I missed you. Shorted the ban of ski, yes.
So noted. Twenty-seven yes, zero no, one abstention, motion carries.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, that does conclude your report.
Yes, our next meeting is going to be on two-two-twenty-two, uh, two-twenty-two, twenty-two. Um, and there's this strange thing that's come up on the calendar, which I don't have any understanding on called temporary retail permits. Um, so tomorrow, I'm gonna, we're gonna be meeting with the SLA to understand what's temporary retail permits. So that's some new thing the state's throwing at us. I don't know what that is. So anybody knows what it is, fill me in. But our next meeting is two-twenty-two, twenty-two.
Thank you, Tom. Dell, land use.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, we had a public hearing and then, uh, followed by a, a committee meeting. The public hearing was for the, uh, the, the building that Steve, uh, Chesler actually talked about, uh, of the Broadway Triangle. It's the smallest building of the triangle, twenty-nine units all told, uh, affordable, um, within, uh, from the, ranging from thirty to eighty percent AMI. Um, breakdown, there'll be seven studios, fourteen one-bedroom, eight two-bedroom, and three of the apartments are reserved for formerly homeless people. And in addition to the landscaping in the rear yard space, uh, the buildings will be all-electric, uh, and will use passive house technology. There is also a thirteen-hundred square foot commercial space that the developers plan to use, lease to a nonprofit group, possibly for a cafe where some of the items will, that are served will be baked on the premises. But that's still in, in the process of, um, developing. Um, after the presentation, we then ended the public hearing, went on to the committee meeting, and the recommendation was to accept the presentation as presented. Um, there were fourteen yes, zero no, and three recusals. So I need a vote on that. Need a vote to approve the, the application.
I make a motion, Bozina Kaminsky.
Zina.
Can we have a?
I think I heard somebody before you, Trina.
Okay.
Who spoke before Trina?
No, I, I, it was me, Chair, Chair Fuller, Madam Chair. I was wondering if we could have, uh, seen how the meeting went last time, if we could have, uh, maybe opportunity. I know there were definitely other committee members that abstained. And, uh, you know, and there was a conversation that I don't feel they are fully reports uh, there, but I believe, uh, you know, uh, we spent a substantial amount of, of time. And I believe it's worth probably, uh, mentioning to things just for the record.
No one abstained. Uh, Sante, are you talking about the Broadway Triangle? No one abstained on this.
No, no, I was talking about that. I talked to, but okay, I'll tap into.
On the Broadway Triangle now. There were no abstentions. There were three recusal.
Okay. I thought you were mentioning that one. Okay, I'll, I'll tap into that when we go to that point.
Okay, now I lost my train of mind. I know it was somebody not, made the motion and Trina seconded. Who made the motion?
I made a motion, Madam Chair, Bozina Kaminsky.
Okay, Bozina and Trina. Jerry, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion is to accept the committee's recommendation. Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Biamonte.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tiaan Brooks.
Yes.
Eric Brizadis.
Yes.
Thomas Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro.
Yes.
Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chorcello. Teresa Cinciatto.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Alkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Horwitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Ozana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Yo Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz. Yo Low. Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Macheli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Niederman. Karen Neves.
Yes.
Mary O'Domack.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Recklin. Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Wait, wait. I take it back. I forgot. This is Broadway Triangle. I recuse. I recuse. I recuse myself.
So noted. Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser.
Yes.
Twenty-seven yes, one recusal, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So the next item is eight forty Laura Street. And this is an application, this actually involves four lots, although the owner does not own all of the lots. Um, they propose to build a ten-story mixed-use building with, uh, MIH with, with affordable housing. There would be seventy-four units total, nineteen affordable, ranging from sixty to, um, eighty percent AMI and twenty-eight parking spaces. I don't know what that is. All right. Anyway, we'll have a little entertainment here. Okay. Lighten the, um, atmosphere a bit. Thank you. So, um, eh, this, eh, in, in response to the, the community request for more green elements that were raised in the public hearing, they have, they agreed to, um, add some street trees with engineered soil and, um, a green roof. Uh, they plan to have some trees and green, greenery or green roofs on, on some of the set, or on the setback terraces. And there is a, um, a vine element growing up the side of the building. We had also asked that they make a commitment to contribute to McCarran Park and work something out with the Parks Department, specifically for the, um, development of McCarran Park. Now, they said that they did begin speaking to the Parks Department, but they were not able to give us any details at all about how much they would be willing to contribute, uh, what their money would be, uh, used for. Um, and, and I'm not, you know, the, the, the committee is not accusing them of not acting in good faith, but they were not at the point yet where they could, uh, make such a commitment or give us any information. And Mary was there. She did confirm that the Parks Department is willing to work with them and try to work something out. Um, now, uh, the, then there were, there were, there were two comments by residents. One, uh, resident spoke against the project, um, stating that in her opinion, it would, it would just further add to the increase in the cost of living and displacement that has occurred by the, all these developments and these, these market rate developments. Um, the, there was also, uh, the, uh, present, the owner of the corner luncheonette. However, she was not ready to make any statement. She said at this point, they're just watching and listening. So, um, the, many of the members of the committee had, had a problem with the, the basic, um, architecture, with the fact that the, with, with the stark, um, difference between the, the small masonry base and then the much larger, uh, upper floors, which are all glass. Um, and the, the majority of the, uh, members of the committee felt that it was kind of, it was almost shocking in, in the, the way there was not any kind of, of subtle, uh, working of masonry to maybe, you know, to, to integrate a little bit better the, the glass with the masonry, uh, and to, to at least have some reminiscence of the historical character of the neighborhood and the block. Um, the committee did agree though that we, that we didn't, we weren't asking that they build a complete, uh, brick or masonry building, but that we would be, you know, just, just asking. And we felt it was an important act, but, uh, asking that the, um, there would be some working and integration of masonry that would replicate the architecture of the original building. Um, the, the developer was not able to make a commitment at that time to address these concerns. Um, the committee also asked, um, for the, the, um, the, the developer to retain and preserve the, the, um, Royal Lace Paperwork Sign. It's really a beautiful sign. And the, the developer did agree to preserve that and incorporate the sign somehow into the building. So the developer was not able to commit to addressing the architectural concerns and was not able to provide us with any details regarding any commitment toward the park. Um, and also was not able to commit to not using fossil fuels for heating and air conditioning. Um, the committee ultimately voted to deny the application unless the following conditions are met. Um, one, that the developer would change the current architectural design to integrate masonry that replicates the architecture of the original building in at least the first six floors. And again, that's just to integrate some, some masonry, uh, aspects, not to, not to, uh, change the designs that the first six floors are, are masonry or bricks. Uh, second was that the developer would, would, uh, agree to contribute substantial sustained funds to McCarran Park pursuant to a community benefit agreement, uh, with or approved by the Parks Department. And the funds would be used by the Parks Department specifically for McCarran Park to augment money as normally received by the park through public funding. We felt that, you know, it, it shouldn't be just something to replace the money that the Parks Department was going to be able to give it anyway. Uh, the third was that the Royal Lace Paperwork Sign will be incorporated into the, uh, building's facade. Fourth was that the, the two Manhattan Avenue properties, which are not included in the building being evaluated, would not be included in the rezoning. Fifth would be, there would be a preference for local businesses and commercial tenants that would provide retail diversity. Sixth would be the developer would provide thirty-five percent affordable units, which is a bit more than the MIH requirement. The developer would not use fossil fuels for heating and air conditioning. Number eight, the developer would consider using, consider, this is just a consideration, consider using passive house technology for further, um, reducing its carbon footprint. And the last was that the committee would recommend that the developer and the city just explore the feasibility of incorporating, um, a, a virtual far forest architectural device. Again, the last two are just, uh, suggestions. So that was the recommendation of the committee. Excuse me, Jerry, can you let Gina Argento in? She's been in the waiting room for like an hour trying to get in. Thank you.
Make a motion to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
One second. Oh, you're in. Okay, thank you.
Jerry, I'm also in the meeting, Marie.
I have a question, but I don't know how to raise my hand. I'm sorry. Oh, there it is.
Go to the panel list and look down into the right-hand corner. There's a hand.
I found it. It doesn't look like a hand. It looks like, I don't know what it looks like.
Yeah, it didn't look like a hand.
Dell, I just have a question. The building is being proposed as mixed-use. Is that a requirement for that site or they just decided to do mixed-use? With the office space?
Well, it's a part of the, as far as I know, part of the rezoning would be that they can, you know? Um, and so they decided that they would have the mixed-use, the retail and commercial, uh, within the first three floor, floors, first three.
Is that because a building was done two doors from me that was allegedly mixed-use and they put in offices on one floor? And then once they got their CFO, they ripped the offices out and turned them into apartments. And I, and I was like, did they get a special deal to build it that way? And then they cheated? I don't know if that's, that's what I'm asking. It's like, they're sticking offices in a residential building. It's like, are they getting extra floor for that or extra space? Or I don't, that's all.
Um, does, does anyone know the answer to that, Jerry? Or do you?
Well, usually, I mean, I'm, I'm.
Only if it's a community facility.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, Jerry. That usually, usually it's a community facility. I'm not aware of mixed-use zoning that involves office. So, so, but to Jerry, exactly what Jerry said, it must have been that it was supposed to be a, a nonprofit user in that space.
Well, rezoning, it wouldn't be. In other words, as a right, then that's where you would get the community facility. But this is.
Yeah, but there isn't, there is, I don't, as far as I know, in this neighborhood, there isn't mixed-use zoning where you can have residential and office in the same building. Residential, retail, but above, I mean, maybe I'm wrong. I'm not sure.
Or in the case. I thought that MX, I thought it's MX and R combined, which I thought did allow retail.
Yeah.
Commercial and residential.
That's right.
It's MX zoning.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying, Karen.
Madam Chair, if I can, I'd love to make some comment as I want to do that earlier, which I believe are important. Uh, okay. I, I had to say, I believe, uh, there were several, uh, members that abstained at the meeting and, and definitely, you know, I felt uncomfortable a little bit how that, that went. It still is not very clear to me the yes and no with recommendation. I, I believe, uh, you know, there were people who had been against entirely. Uh, I believe the owner of the building there felt very vulnerable. But anyhow, I received some email, uh, the day after, somebody up there to opportunity not to be at the meeting, but to watch the YouTube. Uh, other things, recommendation versus, versus condition, I understand we're advisory, but I do not understand when personally I tried to introduce something which is very globally well-known. It's an, it's an environmental measure, as much as it could be passive house and, uh, electrifying a building. So many measures that we should not disregard. I believe I felt definitely there was a very strong. I believe I felt definitely there was a very strong support for affordable house. There is no one time I didn't vote in favor of affordable house. I believe it's a human right. And I believe also it's a human right to make sure the building must be not just energy efficient, because some people said, oh, I don't understand vertical forest, but honestly, what do you need to understand? I, I, I would never ask anybody to have a technical understanding. I challenge any board member if they can explain the real technical understanding of passive house or the real technical understanding of electrifying a building. Because electrifying a building doesn't mean that you are energy efficient. You may acquire energy that still produce carbon monoxide. Are you producing electric energy somehow independently? Because that's a different type of contribution. So we may put things, they said, oh yeah, I support that, but we have disregarded the fact that this building could have contained hundreds of tree. Do we know the benefit? What tree do they produce oxygen? They filter? We don't need to understand what the system. We are questioning the bringing hundred live tree that will continue to grow, that they become part of a system like a park. And we question that. We have washed away the environmental input, which I believe they, I, we cannot disregard that. To me personally, I have no conflict of interest. And I know there is many board member, they work for organization, they produce hundreds of million dollars and they want affordable house. We all want that. I want that, I will want, but I believe why to wash away input, they look at the environment. And we have put it there, we should have put it as a condition. And honestly, I feel let's leave our borough president, let's, people question this at all. I fear if we put that type of recommendation, city planning do not understand. For the record, so it's on YouTube, I have mentioned that our Brooklyn Borough Director of City Planning, Summer, has mentioned that he was aware about vertical forest. He mentioned in the email that he was fortunate enough to go in Milan and that he said that there was nothing against for us to recommend that, to put that as a condition. So why do we question the city planning may not understand? City planning has the right, is the right agency, at least to present it to them. What do we have to lose? And I believe going back to something else, so you are all aware, electrical building, we make a big favor to the developer because to develop a building without gas line, without a proper boiler, save a lot of money. Save a lot of money and put the burden or the increased electrical bill to the tenant, including the one that may go to a, a national affordable unit. And so to me, disregard these things and put it aside, I feel we did a disservice to the community. You don't need to understand the technicality. I do understand honestly, and I will challenge any of you to discuss more if you want, but I never want to take the role. And, and so I feel a little bit that people should reduce themselves if they are potentially conflicted of the interest because they belong to organization and we don't know, we should ask actually developer every time there is a meeting, is any organization is going to be to there to manage the affordable house? And then if somebody worked for an organization manager for the while, so we should know. I believe the rules or the charter says we should announce that before we even make comments. So we can make comments, but at least it's clear for the record. And, and, and honestly, everything should consist. And there were comments that were made by Billy William Vega, even the Chair of the Environmental Committee said that we felt why not to include all those measures? And for the future going on, I believe we cannot disregard this measure because every major top architect on the planet, you can, and I've been attending and here there are people are very close, very, work very closely in the field, they'll tell you that the first client today they have is the environment, then is the developer. And, and so to me, I have, and I believe those are very important thing. We have washed away the possibility. I don't want to make recommendation. I want to make some very strong statement personally. And I want to have the agency to make the decision, our mayor to make this decision, our borough president. Let's do no question about if they are able to understand or not. And, and that's why I abstain and that's why I will continue to abstain. Because we also want to put input, sorry, because I'm knowledgeable about that. This is not a landmark and what does it mean to all? We need a little bit more brick, a little bit...
Can you summarize?
I want to summarize. Even giving this input, a beautiful architecture can contribute to our urban fabrically and can be in design in any way. That's no one, is not the brick that makes a good architectural project. And having a, a forest there vertically, they could cover a bad architecture, definitely it's an improvement, especially when it's close to a park. So even as to say a little bit of glass, you know, it means nothing. I love to give the freedom to a great architect to design, you know, but first the environment. And, and brick there or saving something was a landmark, less, there was another opportunity. We should have said, let's preserve the original brick fabric and let's build like domino, build their ways, the sign, let's keep the original brick. But if they demolish it, we love to demolish and to go up and store it. What are we doing? Who, who is giving the input that that brick is a, it's a good presence where, you know, could be a great architecture without the brick? Certainly glass is always an issue, remember? Because it's like a greenhouse, you need a lot of energy to control the environment and to control the climate of that building. And that control happened through energy, that is for air condition, for climatization. But that's all what I want to say. I wanted this to be on the record, to be on YouTube so everybody can see, because I, I can be personally convent with other agenda, that there are political or there are agenda of nonprofit organization that today they lost that nature of being grassroots. They employ people and the people makes very good salary and, and I believe this situation can be conflictious. Let's be clear. But thank you very much for your attention and I apologize again for taking your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alessandra. Karen?
I have...
Karen, you had your hand up.
I, I have two comments, Sante. First of all, with respect to the vertical forest, a number of the members of the committee told you that they are not ready to make a demand about vertical forests until there is more information given to the committee. And I suggested that something so interesting, but also so complicated, is, it's not fair to ask the committee members to educate themselves about it. I did suggest that, that if you have knowledge of people who might come to give us some education about what the, what's entailed, you know, the details, that we could have some, we could have that provided to either the committee or to, to the full board. So that's with respect to that. Second of all, I think the, the question of do you do yes or no when you have conditions? Um, I will give you my opinion and this is only, I'm only one person here. My sense is, and we, we went through this with River Ring, and, and I had asked Richard Barrack from the Borough President's Office to give us a sense of his overview of when boards will tend to go yes with conditions versus no unless certain conditions are met or no because of concern. And as you all probably remember, um, we, he discussed and I also agreed that when you have a situation where a developer is pretty much willing to go along with what your concerns are, what your conditions are, um, then you might vote yes with conditions, knowing that the, the giving, letting the, the electeds understand that these are conditions, but yes with conditions because we have every reason to believe the developer is willing to be able to meet at least to a large extent what, what the conditions are. And then as Richard Barrack said, if it's a bigger ask, if, for instance, there are conditions that are important and the developer at that point cannot, or maybe will not, or maybe just cannot, because at this stage, they might not be able to make any kind of a commitment to meet those conditions, then it is often chosen to say no unless certain conditions are met with the idea that this gives the Borough President and the council, our councilperson ammunition to work with the developer to, and, and to try to get some concessions from the developer. Now that, we can always, I, that's something I've, I've mentioned that we can always discuss more and, and in more detail with the committee. Um, and, you know, there just isn't any, that I know, there's no mathematical formula for this. I think it's strategy really. Um, so in any case, that was my response, two responses.
Karen?
Um, respectfully, I would like to ask that the committee form a rubric for these projects that come up. Because again, when does the yes turn to a no? What exactly? We, we need some sort of principle and, and guidelines. We're going from project to project and just because one or two, you know, members may feel no, and, you know, I, I think we really need to have questions, answers, some sort of, you said that there's no metric for it. It's not cookie cutter.
Karen, I didn't say that. Let's, let's get...
No, I said, you, you...
There's no...
That there's no mathematical...
Down, down, down.
That, you said that there's no mathematical measure. Correct. But we can do principles. We can as a committee come up with environmental, okay, economic, what are the housing impacts? What do we want on these projects? And come up with some sort of rubric and know when does it trigger? When does a yes become a no with conditions? So that we're all aligned. We need to be aligned on the committee, not just, okay, I want to take the temperature of the room. Who's for what? No, that shouldn't be. We need to come up with these principles so that we're all on the same page with each project that comes up. You even said it yourself. You want to meet with the elected officials. You want to have Lincoln come in so that we can have a land use plan as, as a community. And I'm, I'm for that. Let's do that. But I really think that we need to come up with some sort of principles, have it on paper, and let's get these questions. What are the impacts going to be of having a nine-story, you know, commercial space? What are the impacts if we do allow them to have the extra floors for those units? What, what are, you know, what do we want to see? We want to see extra affordable housing, low afford, you know, income housing. So these are the things and just like what even Sante, okay, fine, it might be new, but, but at the same time, time and time again, we're saying how our community is, you know, injust when it comes to environmental. This is an opportunity. If it is vertical forest, it is an opportunity for us. So, um, environmental impacts. We talk about green roofs, we took, you know, and, and greening. So I really feel that the committee should dedicate some time at one of our meetings and let's come up with principles and let's come up with a rubric. Yes, it's not going to be perfect. Okay, but at least it's going to be a guide for us to move forward with each project consistently, not just willy-nilly, yes, no, maybe so. We can't, we can't move forward like that as a committee. I'm sorry. That, that's just my feeling. Let's get some bounded principles so we can move forward.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Karen. I think that's a great suggestion.
I think it's a great suggestion. And as far as I know, um, I haven't seen any, um, other applications except it's a presentation at our March 1st meeting. And so this is why I wanted to invite Lincoln to come. And I think that this is how we, where we will start. And I, I think that's absolutely right. I have suggested a number of times that we do try to get a, a, a more cohesive sense of when we're, when we have conditions, whether we say yes or, or no. And I think March is, is a good time to start because I think that, um, we will have Lincoln there, we can start talking about all of these. And so I would recommend that, that you and anyone else on the committee, when you, if you have come up with some specifics that you want to start exploring with Lincoln, write them out, send them to me and to the rest of the committee, and even to the full board, because I think everybody should, should see. And we'll have some specifics to start with. And then we can, um, keep going on this and we can make sure to, um, we can make sure to preserve a certain amount of time at each committee member, uh, committee, committee meeting. And we will, um, you know, I think, I think March 1st is a great time to start. And it's very fortunate that at least at this point, it looks like we don't have a, a, a long full agenda. So I think it's perfect. It's a perfect time to start.
Thank you. I really want to appreciate that.
The hand thing isn't working. Dell, Dell, I think, I think that's a good idea, but I also think to get great input, maybe you need to try to set up a separate meeting. And that, that might work out where you're only working on that particular item.
Sure. I think so that what I'd like to do is start having...
I know you want to start, but I'm just saying.
Yes, absolutely. That's fine. Because then at the next meeting, we can see where we've gotten and then we can, we can certainly set up an extra meeting. I agree with you. And we can, you know, move forward on that. And I, Maria is, is also trying to speak.
No, I have Maria, Maria, Maria. Maria. I have other hands ahead of you.
Ryan was first.
Yes. No, I'm, I'm going by the hands on, I'm going on by the hands on the panelists. Next, the next one is Jan. And then the next one is...
I just wanted...
And then the next one is Maria.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Ryan was before me.
Yes.
I wanted to thank Karen and Sanze for really pushing this because we, I think, can you hear me, by the way? It feels like...
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Anyway, I think it's really important. Sanze has been pushing for a very long time and then putting it into ethical things. People in general, many people on the board are quite concerned about our lack of making the changes and pushing for the principles and points that we want. So I want to thank Karen and Sanze and for you willingness now to move, that we're going to do it. Because this has gone on too long and we have other areas that were raised by Sanze that need in-depth discussion and not now, but I just wanted to thank them for their jumping in. That's it.
Thank you, Jan. Chasler?
Thank you. Um, personally to say, yeah, I think it's really one, a really great idea to, yeah, to create some sort of framework or metric or rubric to move forward, but I just want to address the, the environmental part of it. Um, I think what, and part of the discussion, what I suggested is that we need, you know, we need, we need a really big toolbox on the environmental side with these land use actions in terms of what, in terms of, yeah, geothermal, electrification, vertical farming, solar, other renewables, passive, whatever else. And so I would suggest either, either through the land use committee and/or the environmental committee, um, having a hearing and bringing in, you know, experts in these various areas to inform us specific to, um, you know, to local, you know, to development, to, you know, small-scale buildings, large-scale buildings, office buildings, et cetera. So, um, so the land use committee members can easily refer to this toolbox in terms of, you know, what we might demand of developers who are looking to make changes or develop their properties. So, um, I thought I might just bring it up at our next environmental committee meeting, but, but I'm open to however, because we're going down to it, I feel like even every land use action say that is, does have a negative environmental impact affects over a dozen categories. So maybe the transportation committee should weigh in on a river ring and the education committee and, um, you know, public safety, et cetera, et cetera, rather than just the land use committee having to lift that entire burden themselves, you know, it's just so. Um, I think, Jan, you've really talked about having this synergy and connectivity between the various committees informing and helping one another. And I think this would be, uh, you know, on climate and these large developments would be, uh, you know, a catalyst for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chasler. I think this is a great start because whatever happens in, in the community impact or so, so I think it's a great start, great, great ideas. Maria?
Um, I don't think that my hand was raised first. I think there were several people ahead of me. Um, and I don't want to step on anyone, but I'm going to be very brief because right now I don't know what order that was.
Maria, let me just explain it to you. I look at, that's why I ask people to raise their hand if they want to speak. I go by the participants list and I look at the names that's raised and I go up and down and I make a list of who has their hand. and I go up and down and I make a list of who has their hand up. Your name is not on the participants list with your hand up.
Okay, so you're giving me the floor, though. Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate these two seconds of your time and everyone else's. Thank you very much. I just want to say, I appreciate everything that's been said. Sante, as I said before at the Land Use Meeting, I hear you. I understand what you're trying to say. However, there's a lot of education needed for the, not just for the committee, but for the entire board as it relates to the vertical forest. And I'm not saying that we should not, but give us that opportunity. Maybe someone should come and speak and address not only the committee, but the board, so that we can get more education on the subject. And I really thank Lincoln Restler for offering to come to the next Land Use Committee meeting. Dell, I just wanted to add, there is another council member in whose district we are, and that is Jennifer Gutierrez. And perhaps maybe she should also be invited to attend this meeting because, you know, this is also her district. I just, I just wanted to say that.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is William Vega. My hand function, it's not working. May I speak briefly?
Yes, briefly.
Thank you. I just feel there's an extreme urgency for us to deal with environmental issues, climate change, flooding. Here in North Brooklyn, because of the industrialization of our country, we've been dealing with pollution for over 100 years. We need to be the standard. We need to push because there are no more tomorrows. Climate change is real and it's getting worse and worse. I'm so glad that Dell and Steve are going to work together because this is what we need. And I appreciate Karen's input about having the dialogue. And we can all be educated, but there is an urgency. So please jump on it. And with the support of our chairperson, I think we, Chair Fuller, we can lead the way. And we should, because we have been polluted for over 100 years. Thank you.
And Karen, that was a great idea.
Thank you, Vega. Great. Tom, did you have your hand up to speak on this issue? I see you still up.
I sure did. Didn't we just elect a new borough president who made a lot of noise about training us on land use? And aren't there a lot of other community boards that are dealing with the same issue throughout the borough of Brooklyn, including the people who are like around Prospect Park, who have been dealing with these buildings that want to go up around Prospect Park? So where's the borough president? You know, he was talking about shacks in the street today, like we need any more of them. Why isn't he helping us out on the land use issues like he said he was going to do? And I, and you know, and both council members should be involved, not just Lincoln. We have two council members. Like, why is it just Lincoln, Lincoln, Lincoln? It's like, where's Antonio? Where's Jen? Like, where are they? So they should be included in this. And the Borough President's Office has a staff. They can maybe put together some kind of training on environmental issues. And we can invite the people about the vertical forest to speak more than just our board. Where are our elected officials? You know, more shacks in the street? That seems to be the only thing they care about.
And we need to work across Brooklyn.
Tom, I think it's great that we, it seemed like we might be able to take the lead on this and get the information we need. So it's a great idea. I thank everybody for all their input. It was great. And I think this is our opportunity to take the lead on, on environment. Just, you know, because it is critical and we all know that. I don't see anybody else's hands. Are there any other questions?
I just, I have a question. So perhaps for the March meeting, rather than just inviting the two council members, how about we also invite the Borough President to come? And that way they can, you know, the Borough President will be included and will, you know, have a sense of what we're talking about, what kinds of issues we're hoping to deal with and can also be there for the responses of the council members. And we get everybody in the same room. So I think that's a great idea. And why not? Unless somebody has, can think of a reason why we should not invite someone from the Borough President's Office.
Well, I don't hear any objections on that.
Can I add one thing, Chair Fuller?
Yeah.
It's Trina. And I think the another topic that we need to add is housing. What is, what is our target AMI that we're looking for? And to really understand that, and what percentage of affordable are we looking at?
Yeah.
Because I know that that, it'd be good to have real guidance for the Land Use Committee for that as well.
Yes, absolutely. That's what I mentioned, yeah.
Yes, so let's, you know, I have some specific questions. And whoever else has questions that you, you think we should hone in on, we may not get to all of them on, on March 1st, but that's okay. Because we'll have, we'll have some of the electeds there. We will be there together. Obviously, as always, you don't have to be a member of the committee to come to our committee meeting and to participate. So let's move ahead. And I do think it's a good idea, Steve, to have the Land Use and the Environmental Committees working together here. There's, there's really, you know, expertise in each committee that really needs to be put together. Meanwhile, we do have a vote that we need on, we need to vote on, on the committee's recommendation on 8:40. Lorimer.
Did anybody second it? Did you have a vote on it from the committee?
I don't remember. I don't remember if anyone seconded it.
I think Steve, Steve made the motion and I can second it, Trina.
Okay.
Yes. So you're, can you just clarify, because there's been a lot of conversation. You're asking us to approve the recommendation. Could you just repeat the recommendation, please?
I just read the whole thing. If there are nine.
That was what you read. Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, a motion had been made and seconded. Chasler and Trina.
Made the motion?
Chasler and Trina.
Yes. The most, are we going to have a? Jerry, are we having a roll call?
I'm waiting direction from the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, vote, please. I thought you'd go call it after I told you who made the motion.
Sorry.
Motion is to deny with the nine conditions. So if you vote yes, you're actually voting to support the committee's recommendation to deny.
Unless the following conditions are met.
Yes, yes. Deny with the nine conditions sustained.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
So if you vote yes, you're supporting the committee's recommendation to deny. Gina Argento?
Yes.
Wagner Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Barmonti?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Tion Brooks?
Yes.
Eric Porzadas?
Yes.
Tom Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chasler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Sinziata? Giovanni D'Amato?
Abstain.
So noted. Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Divanowski?
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins?
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Elkins?
I said yes, did you hear?
I'm sorry. I heard you now. Thank you. So noted. And Ms. Foster was a yes vote also. So noted. Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross? Katie Denny Horwitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia?
Yes.
Moishe Indig? Ozana Kaminsky?
Yes, Jerry.
Thank you. So noted. Brian Kunin?
Yes.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Abraham Libovitz? Yo Lo? Trina McKeva?
Yes.
Sante Machelli?
Abstain.
Toby Moskovitz?
Abstain.
Thank you. Martin Needleman? Rabbi Niederman?
Abstain.
So noted. Karen Yezes?
Abstention.
Thank you. Maria Damarc?
Yes.
Janice Peterson? Janice Peterson?
Abstain.
Thank you. Dana Rackland? Bella Sable? Bella Sable? Isaac Soffer? Robert Solano? Del Teague?
Yes.
Tommy Torres? William Vega?
Abstain.
Maria Viera?
I, I'm abstaining.
Abstain, so noted. Stephen Weidberg? Simon Weiser?
No.
No. Thank you. 23 yes, 1 no, 8 abstention. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And on a lighter note, Squirrels from Hell will be playing Pea Candy Store again on February 19th. That's not this Saturday, the next Saturday, 9:00 PM. So if any of you are free and you want to hear my crazy band, we'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dell. Transportation, Eric?
Madam Chair, can I make a comment, please?
Who is that?
Rabbi Niederman.
Okay, Rabbi.
Okay. I, we just want to make one comment. I really feel it's not fair for statements to be made that not-for-profits, whatever you agree or not agree, but basically say, not-for-profits, lost there, whatever, there are people who make money over there. That is, I think, a comment that is very unfair. After all, who has rebuilt this community if not for the not-for-profits, like Sagnick, Lasuris, and others, including the UJO? And who's there pushing the, the outing agenda, okay? Again, the not-for-profits. So therefore, I feel it's extremely unfair to quote, you know, to speak down on behalf of the not-for-profits. And then you give an rationale for that because people make money, because they work there. That is unacceptable and I believe it should be noted for the record. The contribution, what has, what has happened for the community should be commended. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. So noted. Transportation, Eric?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I will run down just a brief summary of the meeting. Just because the first item was an update on the Lorimer Station construction. And it's moving forward at both Grand Street, Lorimer Station, and Metropolitan Avenue. Just wanted to make folks aware, if you're not already, that Lorimer Street will be closed from Metropolitan Avenue to Consigliere for at least the next four weeks while they're, you know, staging some of their equipment. Could be shorter, could be longer. This is a new condition that they need to do because of the crane that's going in there, which is currently at Grand Street. But that's the condition. And then it's going to be for the next, for the duration of the project, while they have the staging there. Excuse me, the, it will be a northbound only change from Devoe to Consigliere. So just for everyone that's not aware of that, that's, that's what's going on at that site. We talked about a lot of different issues regarding garbage control, vermin control. The residents are still looking to work with the contract partner, Judd Lough, to get some sound monitoring for the heavy, heavy work that's going to be done soon. And there's still some concerns that their house is shaking. But according to Judd Lough, that's really just surface work. But it will, once they have, start the heavy work, they will be speaking with them and getting consent forms taken care of. And then we'll have MTA and the contractor back in a couple of months just to get an update on, on where the construction stands. I'll be in touch with Andy Inglesby from MTA about what's going on there in the interim. And just to make, and he's been very proactive about going out to the site. I've actually passed him on, on the street several times at the location. I know he's spoken to the residents there and we're just going to keep in touch with him on that. We got an update on the Meeker Avenue project. I just wanted to have them in to see where they finished with their late start on the, on the work back in the fall. They did not complete every punch item, but they did start late. They didn't have the full year to do the work, but most of the concrete work is done. The signal work is, is being completed. And stage one should be completed fairly soon after they start, start back up in earnest in, in April or when weather permitting. There's also some concern about connecting the Cape Bridge to, to the network. DOT is looking at that. Mr. Bearwald of DOT is the project manager is looking at it. But it's ongoing. So there's also some concerns about crossing times, particularly at McGinnis Humboldt exit. They will be, you know, there's some curb outs and some stuff that's going in, but there's still a problem crossing that, that intersection. And once the, all the work is done, they have to wait for the phase to be done before they can go in and do the signals so that they all agree. But they'll be going back to look at, to be looking at that. And they're also going to be looking at installing countdown clocks throughout the corridor. And there is a motion on this, but I'll save all the motions to the end and we can vote on block, if that's fine, Madam Chair. All the other details are in the report. I'll leave it as written. The, I just want to make a note that we had another incident of a public member breaking, breaking quorum and abusing a member of the public who was trying to speak and interrupted, interrupting. She was muted and ejected from the meeting for her inappropriate comments. And I apologize to the committee and the public that they had to hear it. Right. So, and then we got an update on Wythe Avenue. Folks will know that we've been talking about having Jersey barriers installed there to protect the bike lanes. Those are in. There is some additional painting and striping that needs to happen. There's a quick curb that's going to go in to replace some delineators and barrels that have gone in as a safety measure. There is still a concern that folks making the left turn off Williamsburg Street West onto Wythe, you know, those of you who have been seeing the news, you've probably seen a few trucks and cars actually driven up onto the Jersey barriers with that turn. It's hopeful that once the new markings go in and people start upping the traffic laws that they won't run up on that curb anymore on the Jersey barrier. But we're going to keep an eye on it. And there's also still a need for the 9O to go down there and do more enforcement and traffic control at that location. And so we'll be continuing to monitor that situation as it, as it evolves. They did say that the quick crete is not, sorry, the quick curb is not weather sensitive. So as soon as they get approval from city planning, they should be able to get that in within the next 30 days or so. I also have a motion on that. Okay, so, and then old business, we discussed Grand Street and getting a protected, physically protected bike, bike lane installed there. The new DOT Commissioner, Edonnis Rodriguez, who was formerly the City Council Chair of the Transportation Committee, has made a commitment to replace delineators and things like that to make physically protected bike lanes. There was a discussion, which unfortunately, I apologize, is not reflected in the report, but it is in the YouTube, obviously. You know, there was a, there's a concern, those of you that have been around for a minute, remember the year-long discussion about Grand Street and the terrible condition that it was. the terrible condition that it was left in once, uh, the governor changed his mind, um, about, uh, the L train shutdown. There, the bid is very concerned. The businesses are very concerned with the conditions. Bikers were concerned, um, that the road bed is not, is not safer with the new, um, with the new array. So, uh, we will be asking uh, for, um, uh, for a community-based redesign, rather than just throwing up, you know, concrete protection that really isn't gonna serve anybody. And so, uh, and then, uh, just, uh, again, under old business, we're gonna be next, at the next meeting, we're gonna be talking about the area behind the water treatment plant. Um, there's a lot of abuse going on there by some of the, some of the trucks, and we need to get that squared away. Uh, we'll be talking about that at the next meeting. So we have four motions, all but one, oops, all but one passed unanimously. And, uh, Madam Chair, with your indulgence, I'll, I'll read them, and then we can vote on block. Uh, or I can separate out the one that was not unanimous, if you prefer.
I think you should.
Sure. Okay. All right. So let's do the, the, uh, the, the, the first one, which was, uh, so those of you will remember when we talked about the meter parking, which was not, um, the purpose of having Meeker Avenue on the agenda, was to get an update on the construction and the, and the, and the, um, uh, on the progress. But since it is an issue revolving around that, it did, it did, and it was brought up in the pub, uh, when the public comments came up, um, that, uh, it's important that the board, uh, redrafts the letter that we had sent, um, after, uh, the initial announcement of the paid part, the meter parking, um, that the board still stands opposed to the meter parking. Uh, and, but then when we redraft the letter, uh, because we have a new, uh, City Council representation, as well as a mayor, that it should go to them to have it formally on their, on their agenda. But then also to, um, and I'll just read the motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Vega. Uh, Community Board One, to redraft the letter opposing metered parking under the B Q E to Mayor Eric Adams, uh, Commissioner of New York City Department of Transportation, Edonnis Rodriguez, the Director of the New York City Office of Management and Budget, Jacques Gija, and the Commissioner of the Department of Finance, Preston Nyblak, um, as well as City Council Members, Jennifer Batieres, and City Council, uh, Member, uh, Lincoln Wrestler. And the reason, uh, that, uh, and that was, uh, voted with two no votes, but no abstentions. Um, and it did pass. And, um, the reason we're sending it to the Director of Finance, as well as, uh, the Director of O M B, is that it was, it's not D O T's decision to put in meter parking, that it's their, they are tasked to, um, to implement that, that program. So, uh, O M B and, uh, Finance have their hand in generating that under the previous administration, and it's important for the new, uh, administrators, uh, to understand that. So that, that was the motion that did not pass unanimously, so I'll ask, uh, for a vote on that. It did pass the committee, though.
I second it.
Vega, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Gina Argento?
Yes.
And I need to mute themselves.
Bogdan Bakarowski?
Lisa Bamanji?
Gina Barrows?
I need to mute themselves.
Rabbi Niederman?
Yes. Gina Barrows? Tion Brooks?
Yes.
Eric Presides?
Yes.
Tom Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera? Phil Capone?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella, Teresa Cinciatto?
Yes.
Giovanni Damato?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Dibinowski?
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins?
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster? Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross? Katie Denny Horowitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia? Moisha Indig? Ozana Kaminsky?
Yes.
Ryan Coonan?
Hello?
Ryan Coonan?
Uh, no.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza? Abraham Leibovitz?
Yes, did you hear me? Jerry said yes.
So noted, Maria. Thank you. Abraham Leibovitz? Yo Lo? Trina McKeva?
Yes.
Thank you. Sante Mchelli? They're, they're stepping on you. I'm sorry. Sante Mchelli?
Hear my name?
Sante Mchelli?
Abstained, Sante.
You hear me?
Thank you. Toby Moskowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Martin Needleman? Rabbi Niederman?
You hear me?
I don't know who you are, but Rabbi Niederman? No vote. Karen Yezes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary Adamer?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Dana Rackland? Bella Sable? Isaac Soffer?
Yes.
Thank you. Robert Solano? Del Teague? Tommy Torres? Tommy Torres? William Vega?
William Vega, yes.
Maria Vieira? Stephen Weidberg?
Yes, Maria Vieira.
Simon Weiser? Twenty-four yes, one no, one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, okay, now the next three, uh, were voted unanimously with no abstentions, and, uh, I'll just read them. First one, uh, by Ms. Quonen, seconded by Mr. Vega. Community Board, uh, Community Board One, to draft a letter to N Y P D Ninetieth Precinct to increase enforcement of illegal parking and standing on Wythe Avenue from Williamsburg Street West to Penn Street. The next one is made by, uh, Community, uh, Committee Member Paul Kelterborn. Uh, Community Board One, to draft a letter to New York City, uh, D O T Commissioner, Edonnis Rodriguez, to request a community-based, very important, community-based redesign of Grand Street to include physically protected bike lanes. And, and the last item, uh, the last motion was made by all of Community Member, uh, Ms. Bright, Bronwyn Brightner. Motion to, uh, Community Board One, to draft a letter to N Y C D O T, uh, to include the following improvements to Meek, to the Meeker Avenue Plan. Improved signal timing and safer pedestrian crossing. More effective storm water management under the B Q E. Upgraded lighting. A physically protected bike lane. Traffic controls at Monitor Street and Meeker Avenue. The inclusion of audible pedestrian signals throughout. And, uh, that was seconded by Mr. Vega. And again, all three voted on, uh, approved unanimously by the committee. So I need a motion to approve those three items.
William Vega seconds.
Eric, just a point of information. So was the resolution for Grand Street? The Meeker Avenue Plan improvements? And what was the other one?
Uh, sorry. So it is, yes, community-based plan for Grand Street?
Right.
To, uh, uh, better enforcement, uh, Williamsburg Street West to Penn by the nine oh.
Okay, that's the one that's missing. Thank you.
Okay, okay, sure.
Motion to approve, Steve Chesler?
You have to second it. Vega already made a motion to approve.
Second?
Okay, uh, Vega and Che- Chester. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, so the motion is to approve the committee's three recommendations regarding the one, the Grand Street Resolution, number two, the Meeker Avenue Plan improvements, number three, the, the, uh, enhanced enforcement of Williamsburg Street West. A yes vote is to approve the committee's recommendation. Gina Argento?
I abstain.
Bogdan Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Bamanji?
Yes.
Gina Barrows? Tion Brooks? Eric Presides?
Yes.
Thomas Burrows?
Yes.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Phil Capone?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella, Teresa Cinciatto?
Yes.
Giovanni Damato?
Abstained.
Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Dibinowski?
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins?
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yes.
Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross? Katie Denny Horowitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia? Moisha Indig? Ozana Kaminsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Ryan Coonan?
Yes.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Abraham Leibovitz? Yo Lo? Trina McKeva?
Yes.
Sante Mchelli?
Abstained.
Thank you. Toby Moskowitz? Martin Needleman?
That was a yes. I'm sorry. Yes.
So, so noted. Thank you. Martin Needleman? Rabbi Niederman?
Yes.
Karen Yezes?
Yes.
Mary Adamer?
Abstained.
Janice Peterson?
Uh, yes.
Dana Rackland? Bella Sable? Isaac Soffer?
Abstained.
Robert Solano? Del Teague? Tommy Torres? William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Vieira? Maria Vieira?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg? Simon Weiser? Twenty-four yes, zero no, five abstentions. Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Um, so, uh, the next meeting is to be determined. We're looking at the first week of March or the second. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you. Likewise, Eric. Uh, Parks Minute has written electus, uh, Nicholas Perry here from the Controller's Office? Nicholas Perry? Hey, I guess he's not here. Okay, is there any old business? Is there any new business?
Madam Chair?
You got old business?
Old business, yeah. Um, yeah, just to, thank you, uh, refer back to what, uh, one of the things Lincoln Wrestler uh, alluded to was the funding that was allocated towards Bush McKinley Park to demolishing the city storage warehouse and, um, and beyond. And just want to note that, you know, it's just, it's incredibly historic that we saved the land, and now the, um, there's like two-thirds of the park that still has to be built, and that's gonna go a huge, uh, way in doing that. And the way it happened was, there was a hu- uh, incredible coalition of elected officials. Our, uh, Steve Levin, our former council member, Lincoln Wrestler, uh, Carolyn Maloney, uh, Emily Gallagher was gigantic, uh, Senator Kavanaugh, and, um, Mayor Bill de Blasio and Senator Chuck Schumer were all fantastic. But I want to give a special thanks to this board because the resolution that was passed unanimously writing to the Office of Management and Budgetment to release those funds was a, a factor along with those other things. So resolutions matter. And so, um, the community, huge thanks to, to the board, and, um, we're a huge step closer to, um, to getting the park that we were promised seventeen years ago, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to know, uh, did the renewal applications come out yet? Cause I see applications, but are they for new people or the ones that are on the board already?
Okay, Holly, give me, Maria, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to know about the renewal applications because my name is coming up, and I want to know if they're out already.
They're supposed to be on the website.
There is.
It's supposed to be on the Borough President's website.
On the website, it just says, um, applications. I don't know if those are for the new people?
That's good. An application for everybody to re-up and everything.
Oh, okay. All right.
Madam Chair, point, Madam Chair, point of information, I think the deadline's been pushed back, if I'm not incorrect. Jerry would know?
Yeah, deadline was pushed back, but I don't know because they had, didn't have it on. But, uh,
I, I had sent an email, Madam Chair, to all the board members that had the link to the application was provided me by, to me by Erin Buchanan at Borough Hall. Uh, I'm going from memory, but I think that the, the application was pushed back to March fourth. But check your email. If you don't have it, let me know. I'll resend it. It's an online application, Marie. I know Antonio spoke about a paper application. Uh, I have not seen any evidence of a paper application as of yet.
Oh, cause I'm not.
Could you check, could you check with Borough Hall? Because they did say something about they was gonna try to put together a paper application.
Yeah, cause I'm not.
When I spoke to Ms. Buchanan.
Oh, okay.
But they provided nothing as of yet.
You can keep me informed, Jerry. I appreciate it.
Yeah, but what happened to term limits? And, uh, what happened? Jerry?
I don't know, Jen. I asked that at the Borough Board meeting a few months ago, and nobody's ever gotten back to me about it. So nobody has been able to speak on term limits.
I, I believe that starts with new, uh, uh, any recurring appointments starting this year, right? Because it was voted on last year. I think that's correct.
Like I said, Eric, nobody's been able to tell me when term limits start.
Years ago, we voted.
Right, right.
Or three.
Nobody's been able, like I said, I brought it up with the last administration at a Borough Board meeting, and they were supposed to get back to us. They never did. So I don't know what they're gonna do about term limits, but I guess we'll know something sooner or later.
Well, let's ask Lincoln Wrestler and Jen.
Well, when we find out, we'll certainly let the board know, you know?
Thank you.
Everybody's, everybody's transitioning, so it's kind of hard to, uh, get anybody that, uh, can really help us at this point. Okay, is there any, is there any other old business?
One thing about Community Board applications, there's a printable version of, of the application on the Brooklyn Borough President's website. And they have an address you can send it to, if that helps.
Have an addressed what?
They have the address you can send, uh, the application to, and they have a PDF version that you can print.
Okay, so I imagine you have to, uh, print it out and fill it out, and you can mail it. They got a mailing address.
So that's also for people that are already on the board, then? It's not for new people?
The application is the same, Marie, from what I understand.
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll pull it out. Let's see.
It's probably, Marie, there's probably a checkoff at the top saying that if you're a new member or a reappointment. But that's good news, Tion, if the paper ballot is available, because quite a few board members have been asking me about that, and it, it wasn't available last time I checked.
It looks like they just updated their website.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tion. Is there any new business?
I have new business.
Okay.
Okay, um, in light of, I think, anyone that's been online or has been talking to the or has been talking to their neighbors, in light of the con ed rate increase that was, went into effect on January 1st, and the fact that they're asking for another increase of 11%. I feel like the Community Board, it would be good if we wrote a letter into the Public Commission. I guess this would be something that would go through Environmental Committee and come to the full board. But I definitely think, if not a full board presentation on public power, one of these things to really talk about this issue, because it seems to be something that is affecting everyone and has everyone up in arms.
I go along with Ryan. My house had no electricity, no electricity last night at all. And now I have, they cut the 220 wire. I'm just saying, it's very unclear what's happening with all this new money that's supposedly fixing and improving things.
Okay, Steve, can you take that up at your Environmental Committee meeting?
Sure. I'll add it to our agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Ryan. Is there any other new business? Here and now, motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to stay home?
Thank you. Have a lovely evening.
Give me your own call? Give me your own call for that?